Brian Card.
Here.
Viadco Lawrence, here. John Sarantopoulos.
Here.
Matthew Wendar.
Here.
Michael Huco.
Here.
And Keith Thurlo.
Here. Alternates were all set, right? Any addendum?
No agenda addendum.
Okay. Do we need to read these comments again, or just?
There's, I did not receive any citizen comments on anything that was not subject to a public hearing. All, the only comments I got were, were comments for what we were considering under our public hearing. And I will go through those when we get to the public hearing.
Special permit application, 231308, the Craft Group, Big Y Plaza, 70 War Regent Road, GIS map 217, lot 57, 8.3 acres, general commercial, request to open a cannabis establishment, review retail and manufacturing.
Sorry. Section 567 cannabis establishment, section 700 and others, special permit in section 470 site plan review. Could you introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Jonathan Angelovich.
Yeah, I can put your one light with the green light. Just put it on your green light.
Yeah, just, it doesn't matter, just either one. Just hit the, hit the.
Just press it.
There we go. Jonathan Angelovich.
Jenna Angelovich.
Okay. Do you want to make a presentation at all?
I think we're going to the slideshow, I believe. So we are here tonight to look after a special permit request for a cannabis retail and manufacturing site over at 70 War Regent Road. So we're a Massachusetts cannabis company, based cannabis company. We've entered into a lease agreement with the Big Y Plaza to lease 8,000 square feet for roughly 4,000 square feet of manufacturing and 4,000 square feet of retail. Next.
Jonathan?
Yeah, Jonathan.
Okay. Take your time. This is a quick, who we are. Our leadership team believes in being fast forwards and studying the industry, our competition and ourselves as we relentlessly pursue excellence in everything that we do. Cannabis is simply a plant, but without it, life just isn't as colorful. We believe well-crafted cannabis enhances the captivating experience of consuming it. So what makes the Craft Group different, consistent, top-quality cannabis comes first. We are craft-driven creators, meaning we prioritize producing and best producers over generating the most hype. By utilizing industry-leading technologies, our company can better serve our customers and a faster and blazing passion for our product. Next.
If anybody has questions, Dern.
So our goal, as we've already had some accomplishments in Mass, which we'll go over in a minute, is to build a fully vertically integrated multi-state operation. We establish best-in-practice retail cultivation, manufacturing techniques and practices. We want to partner with high-end, sorry, high-end sources of industry-leading genetics for high-quality, consistent strains. Also partner with local cannabis businesses for distribution networks and become a leader in the community and set a standard for cannabis operations. Accomplishments to date, we've entered into host community agreements both in Dudley and Oxford, Massachusetts. We, last year we obtained a provisional license with the Cannabis Control Commission for a retail location in Dudley. We are in the process of wrapping up that special permit now, which should be done in the next 30 to 45 days. We are in the process of going through our provisional license stays in the town of Oxford for a manufacturing and cultivation facility. That should be getting issued to us in the next 60 days and then following soon after that, we'll be going for our special permit for that project. Last year, we've been awarded a special permit from the town of Dudley for a 100,000-square-foot a canopy cultivation site at 40 Fish Road. And we've had some preliminary discussions with the town of Putnam for another relay, retail location.
So, just follow up on those. So those, those two in Massachusetts are your only two facilities right now?
Correct, right now, correct.
Neither one are operating?
Not yet.
So you have no operating facility yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
What was the statement about Putnam?
We just had some small talks with Putnam as far as trying to locate a dispensary within there, zoning requirements. There's a couple places that we've, show interest. So, this is the location. It's to the left-hand side of the Big Y Plaza. I believe it was a Dollar General at one time. Next. This is just a quick picture of the exterior facade and the interior of the building. Next.
So what?
Go ahead. Yeah, this is a, just a rough sketch. Do we get our architecturals back? So the total building is 8,000 square feet. 3,000 square feet roughly be used for retail space, including the security, the retail floor and the purchase and sale systems, the vault and fulfillment areas. Then roughly 3,000 square feet of utilized for manufacturing, including the extraction labs, solvent storage, ethanol and butane extraction, and the water reuse system, product storage and assembly areas. And then there's roughly 2,000 square feet of office space and facilities and closets, utilities. This is just a quick rendering of what the inside would look like. Question?
It's not important.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Next. Next. So this is a part of our slide that we use in the town of Oxford where Oxford, where part of our facility is actually going to have an outdoor extraction, cannabis extraction container. We're not obviously doing that in Killenly, but this is just to kind of give you an idea of what the kind of the room would look like. So they're basically state-of-the-art turnkey. This is modular though, but everything we'll be doing is state-of-the-art, C1, D1 for fire suppression and beat all the NFPA and NBC building codes of standard. Next. So we're doing both solvent and solventless extraction here. So the solvents we'll be using will be butane and the other one will be ethanol. So ethanol is pretty much just a grain alcohol. And what you do is with both of them, you're taking the solvent itself and you're pressing it through the cannabis plant and you're pulling out all the terpins and the cannabinoids and the oils. And then you're going to use that to make your vapes and your edibles and your baked goods and stuff like that. Next. Water and biomass waste. So using both solvent and solventless systems, both systems are closed-loop, so there is no waste going down the, into the sewage system. Pretty much what happens is you, as you run through the process, once the biomass is spent, you can't pull any more product out of the plant. You just discarded the plant. So in Mass, and I believe Connecticut's the same, you have to have a state-certified waste hall to take all your biomass away. Some states allow you to use it in compost, but not Connecticut right now. So, you know, when the time comes, we'll have a state-certified waste hall to take away all our biomass. Next. So security is usually one of the bigger topics. It's very heavily regulated by the Department of Consumer Protection. We utilize a company called Satronic Security Integrators. He's a well-established company in the cannabis industry. He's currently operating, I believe, 12 or 13 states right now. He's based out of Massachusetts. Low voltage intercom door stations, fixed interior and exterior cameras. So every square inch of the facility has to be monitored at 24 hours a day, 70 as a week. The security is actually looped to the State's Cannabis Control Commission, so they can lock into our facility at any time and watch what's going on. We have to install a generator to guarantee that security does not go out, so there'll be backup all the time. So security is a very, very big thing. Next. We have, we do have a full copy of our security plan here as well.
Security plan, yeah, we did want to include it because it's.
Very detailed.
But if anybody wants a copy, we can provide it.
Next.
Should be for the record, right?
Yeah.
That was totally up to them. At this point, it is a security issue, so I do not know if they'd want it open to the public, because once they give it over to me, it's open to the public.
Yeah, I think.
We have them meet directly with the town constable's administrator to go through that plan and vet that plan. And that's a, for concern, security concerns.
Right.
We typically let that be a separate process.
Yeah.
I was just following up on his offering.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we have it in case you want to view it.
Yeah, viewed here, yeah. Because, just because the final architecturals are not fully done, you know what I mean? So we're not, we want at least it's actually 100%.
The people that, that review the security are the town constables.
Right.
The fire marshal.
They both have copies already. We sent them out a couple weeks ago. We haven't received comments yet.
For clarity, if that plan is shared with you guys, we by default get a copy and it is open for public review.
So you've, you've shared the plan with the fire marshal and town constable? Have you met with them yet?
Not yet. No, no.
You said it does monitor with the state.
Yeah.
What department?
I know in Mass, it's through the Cannabis Control Commission.
I believe it's the Department of Consumer Protection.
Protection, which is, I think, in Connecticut right now.
Yep.
So some highlights for the community, significant opportunity for economic growth, development through retail and manufacturing, great new, well-paying, full-time jobs with meaningful benefits, extensive training programs, you know, we're looking at a high between minimum of 15 to 20 people for this facility. Giving back 3% of all revenue to the town and to the facility. We're, we've had some small talks with QVCC about possibly doing maybe a co-op with them. They have a cannabis certification program. My sister here has actually enrolled in it. Our, our attorney's actually had meetings with them to try to become a possible teacher for their law side of it. So we're hoping to really grow that relationship and maybe offer a scholarship eventually down the road for some students or something to that effect. Next. Questions?
It's fast, it's hard to absorb it.
So hot, sorry.
Take your time.
Eight minutes.
Well, if you want to take some time to review it, feel free. Do you want the public comment?
Sure.
Okay. We, for the record, we received three public comments today. One was from Michelle Murphy at 325 Breakneck Hill Road in Dayville. I cannot, I'm not supposed to read these all, so I'm trying to highlight some of the points. These are all available on our website for the public, so they can read them if they so choose. I am writing to show my concern that the town of Killenly is considering putting a second marijuana dispensary in town. That being said, I find that the topic of marijuana use is still a controversial subject in our society today. Not everyone wants several marijuana dispensaries in town. I feel we should have citizenship participation and input in deciding the number of dispensaries that we want to have in town. Please consider taking measures to include citizens of Killenly's input in these, in these future dispensary decisions. Then she goes on a little bit more, but it talks about, the planning and zoning commission cannot determine a ballot question. That would be more of the town council. Next one is from Ula T Barkley, 26th Star, Lantin Hill Road.
That's Ula T Barkley who sits here.
Barkley, yes. Because of conflicting obligations, I am unable to attend tonight's public hearing. I am concerned that the state of Connecticut has already changed its regulations on the number of marijuana dispensaries a municipality may have. Let's see. Then she goes on to talk about how several municipalities have chosen not to allow growth facilities and dispensaries. She says although she personally is against growth facilities and dispensaries, she believes the residents of Killenly should make this decision. She doesn't believe a public hearing alone is sufficient. And she wants to know how is the information in regards to a public hearing being disseminated? I will go into that as underneath the staff's response to that. The third re, um, letter that we got was from a Ms. Kathy Fedor from 107 Primrose Crossing. She did attach a copy of a regulation, but that was the outdated regulation. Therefore, staff went to you, went to the regulations and we printed out the current state statute. And it's strict, and highlight for that one is that Public Act 22-103 deleted former subsections E and F regarding maximum number of retailers or micro cultivators in a municipality. And then she goes on to state some of the issues of, she does not believe that normalizing cannabis use is not compatible with Killenly's family values. She says tax revenue is not the only consideration. She goes on to talk about a burden of transient and embedded unhoused population, drug diversion court and probation monitoring. She goes and she makes a note, a comment from Nora Volko, who is the Director of Natural Institute of Drug Abuse. And then she goes on to state something about the National Institute of Health, Library and Medicine. But as I said, some of the information that she gave with regards to the state is now outdated and you do have the most recent copy of section 21A 422F, a municipal authority regarding establishing cannabis establishments. That is in your packet as well. Any questions, any comments? Can staff respond to some of these? Okay. Just basically, I am stating that how we notice this public hearing is how it's required underneath the state statute and our town regulations. We've done everything in accordance to what it's supposed to be done. The applicant not only put up one sign, he put up two signs. He put one on the front, you know, the front stone wall, the entrance to the area, and then he put one on the actual section of the building that it was taking place on. Because he wanted to make sure that he was in compliance with it being seen from the street, but he also didn't want everybody to think, oh, Big Y was going to turn into cannabis establishment, which it's not. Again, the legal notice was posted in the town clerk's office on April 27. A legal notice was published in the Norwich Bulletin on Monday, May 1st and Monday, May 8th. That is our normal procedure to publish that. And then public hearing placards, again, were posted at the location as required under our zoning regulations. And we did an inspection on May 5th and they were there in the proper timeframe. So everything that was done as required under state statute and under our regulations for notification was done. Anything you want to add?
So, am I going to understand that you're actually growing?
We're not growing. Nope, just manufacturing.
Yeah, so it's shipping in, you're processing.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So, the ethanol and the butanes, they got to meet fire marshal's standards.
Correct.
Then just, excuse me, discussion with them about?
Yep.
Yes.
Storage and?
Yes.
Okay. What about parking? And any, any discussion about?
So there's.
Shipping, people moving in, moving material?
We can submit this, right? Is there a plan in their packet by chance?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the whole, easily the whole left side of the building, which is, I want to say, if someone can count one, two. Say there's like probably 40, 45 parking spots. So we got plenty on just the left side alone for our employee parking and customers. And plus, we're allowed to park, you know, in front of Big Y.
So the northeast corner?
Yes.
As you, as your?
Correct.
Employees?
Yeah.
Shipping deliveries?
That's what we're going to try to push all the customers, obviously.
So you have cameras all in that whole corner outside?
Yep, inside, outside, correct.
Can I just state one question, just so he knows?
Sure.
They requested the waiver from having a new survey done because there was already a survey on record. What he offered to us was the front page. We got copies of the survey that was actually on record and they're much clearer. So if you go to the second and third page, it will show you, you can definitely read that there's 31, 36, 44 parking spaces.
Yeah.
Over to the side.
So this will, would it be tractor trailers or just box vans?
Box trucks. Yeah, mostly the typical like Sprinter vans for the most part.
And so what, is there any particular spots that are identified just for your facility?
So our, as far as parking?
Yes.
No.
Retail.
Retail, we have to discuss that with the landlord, but it's pretty much the whole left-hand side and we can have easily from here over, this last row, pretty much from here over.
In front of the.
You can't see that.
I'm sorry, okay, sorry, yeah. From like this parking row here, over.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where will you be making the major door entrance on? So to the north end?
The main, the main entrance will be, yes, in the front where the current entrance is.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. And then all the deliveries and employee come in on the back corner here.
All right.
There's a door in that corner.
There's a door in the middle there too, isn't there?
Yep.
And that's what, all that parking, would that be just a secondary entrance?
Correct.
I'm reading.
All the customers have to go through the main entrance.
On the screen, so all the parking on this left-hand side, right? These few spots and then those ones right there?
Mm-hmm.
Which is pretty much your closest one, that's 58 spots.
No, yeah, I'm not questioning.
We would love to see them all full, but it'd be very unlikely.
Just so you know, I'm trying to peruse through the power regulations.
Yep, yep.
Just question whatever might apply.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Yeah, the applicant did supply pretty much the, the regulations with responses going through that are redlined.
Okay, well, I'm going to verbalize what I want.
Okay.
And then you just, it's going to record. Surrounding, nature of the surrounding area, proposed use of future harmony with the neighbors, questionable. Transition, it's been unlikely. The proximity of churches, dwellings, schools, public buildings, I don't know, just trying to ever measure to see how far they are from there.
We went over it and everything is outside of it.
So, so town staff looked at it, there is somewhat of a nuance, a nuance between the Little League being on a town property. But the, the way the regulations are written, it's expressly looking at use. The Little League is a nonprofit. They operate only on a portion of that town property. They're over, I think it was 800 feet.
Yeah, I think it was 860 or 880 feet.
That's a direct.
Direct, straight, straight line. If you had to go through the parking lot?
From the front door.
And go down the road and everything, it only gets longer. The only other thing, but it's not a town-owned thing, it, it's not, not really a listed use, but we did measure it out, was the Martial Arts Academy, because it's a, you know, a youth kind of program. And that also, a straight line going through swamp and through the woods is above the 500.
So like St. James Church too, must be beyond the 1,500 or?
Which one?
Well beyond.
Oh, St. James is way beyond, yeah. It's, St. James, I would say is probably beyond the 1,500.
Well, there's also the other one on Father South on?
The church?
Yes.
The church on Route 12 South?
On Route 12.
Yeah, that church would probably be closer than St. James.
Yeah. Well, St. James goes to school, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah. But they, I can tell you this, that anything that's off the map and that church that you're talking about is southern, and it's off the map, that's beyond the.
Limit.
More the limit.
And just to clarify, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Jonathan, the edge in 60 feet is from what measurement?
So the 860 feet is from the front door of the proposed cannabis establishment, like the bird flies straight to the edge of the roadway.
WPCA.
The WPCA's roadway, the grass. So it is a type of, it's basically a facility easement, but it's more of a gentleman's agreement, excuse the term of phrase, but that's how the Little League and the town operate, is a, essentially a handshake deal. They have that grass facility, the rest of it, the rest of that use, that right of way has always been industrial or for the WPCA purposes.
Yep, I just, I just want to make sure it's measured to the bottom, that would be the south corner.
It was measured to, and I have a map, can you bring up the GIS? I can show you exactly in the GIS, I can show you exactly in the GIS what we measured.
Sure, maybe it's gonna, I gotta, I gotta reshare it, hold on.
So anyway, that was one of my comments too on this particular application for that section. I do think a map should be included and put in the record showing separation given the ball fields proximity, because that, that was one of my thoughts and I didn't measure it because I wanted to see applicant measure.
Will we do the measure from the GIS?
Yep. It works.
So from, even from the property line here, the closest portion of the property line as it relates to that use? Is, forgive me, the, our GIS upgraded?
Yeah, I noticed, I couldn't find the old one.
Yeah.
You just get comfortable on the side over.
Yeah, but even. Okay, so from the property line going straight across, right, to pretty much the property line closest to the, to the ball field is 796. The 800 number came from the entrance to the edge of the grass of the, essentially the facility easement for the ball field. I can try to. So that's the, it, so 831 would be, yep, not 830, not 860, 831.
And while you have this, a quick question, those three residential properties in the front?
Yep.
Are those zoned what?
Let's check. Oh, actually, there's a zoning map.
Well, I couldn't quite.
Yeah, they're zoned low density. So they're zoned residential. That yellow?
Yep.
Is residential.
Those are residential, right?
Yep. Yep, purple is industrial.
Yep.
Red is general commercial.
So this, this map was wrong? I'm not sure what this map was supposed to be telling us, it was just all colored red.
That was just in a butters list. This map? Right here is the zoning. Right?
All right, because there was no butters list attached. It just had butters, I guess, okay? Butters map, but there's no, no butters list in the package.
That was part.
It was.
Yeah, that was an oversight, I think, on our part.
We do have a copy of it.
Yeah, we do have a copy of it.
Okay, yeah, we didn't have that, I don't have that on it, so.
So how does that 800 play out, right?
800, I think it was 831 was the current one, like 860, but 831?
831 to the front door, to the edge of the, what I would consider the park.
And for the record, what's the reg?
The regulations require 500-foot radius.
Potential nuisances, any potential nuisance of it, from it. Smoke pouring out the doors?
No.
No, no, nothing like that. It's, you're not allowed to use onsite.
Right.
So they're not allowed to use it onsite, so?
No consumption onsite, correct.
There's zero consumption onsite on either manufacturing or retail side.
Okay. Anne Marie, how's it with the plan of the development?
Well, it does go through our zoning regulations and under a special permit, it would be allowed use underneath that, and it does infill on our commercial area, so.
Anybody, no additional screening required?
As far as?
I'm just commissioner.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
It, I can tell you right now, I drive by that every single day.
Can't see it.
And you can't see it from the street. You have to actually drive into.
Too high.
It's too high and too far back.
No modifications to the existing building?
No. No, we'll just put a, you know, our sign up front, but no exterior modifications.
Is there going to be limitations in a number of occupants, employees and customers, retail customers?
We'd have to look into the state regulations, I don't think, we'd have to look into the state regulations, to be honest with you.
You never looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's typically, I mean, the ones that, you know, we know and do business, other business with is, you might have 10 people and their customers at a time, that's a lot.
How many seating, you were showing a bar, basically, seating.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's a little extravagant, that's like. Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's a little extravagant, that's like, it's, there'll be probably between four and six point-of-sale systems. So, like cash registers, if you will.
Right, counters, I mean, stools, how many?
No, there's not going to be no stools.
No stools?
No, no stools, no, 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 no.
The picture you showed them?
Yeah, sorry, a little misleading.
No seating. How many employees?
Between both sides, at least fifteen to twenty. And the operational hours will be whatever the town and state dictate.
And that would be, including security, part of that?
Security will be an extra two to three.
Inside and out?
You only have to do inside, so typically, a customer would come in, there's a security, you come into a security room, you will get your ID scanned to make sure it's not a fake ID. At that point, they can, they will click a buzzer, which actually opens a door that takes you into the retail area.
So the security, the security that would be inside, would they be like employees of you, controlled by you, or they?
So you can do either, or, you can, you can do it in-house and control it in-house, or there's third parties that you could use.
I was wondering like what law?
Most likely, third parties, but.
So pedestrian ways, nothing's changing from what's?
No.
Okay, everything else seems to be the same. No lighting changes?
No. You're really not allowed to promote it.
Yeah.
Legal, you know what I mean, legally.
I don't mean signs, I'm just, it's additional lighting at all.
No.
Okay, commissioners, any commissioners or questions?
Is there a light, quit lighting on that north parking lot?
I've never been there at night, I'll be honest with you.
I haven't either.
Yeah.
I don't remember seeing any lights there, that's why.
I can tell you that before they open, they will have to have the fire marshal go through, the constable will have to go through, the building official will have to go through, Jonathan's going to go through, so if anything needs to be changed, corrected, or updated, or upgraded.
The cannabis control commission has to sign off on your building also, so, it's quite a.
Yeah, I was also going to add that it is on our list of questions, we, like we had said, we reached out to the fire marshal.
And the police chief.
And the police chief already, or the constable, excuse me.
There are pedestal lights in that other parking lot.
I believe they have to be night sky.
There are pedestal lights in the, in the other parking lot, same as for the rest of the plaza on the islands. I can reshare my screen, but I zoomed in on the parking lot.
It's one of the questions here, so, but it does, the cameras are on night vision?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, additional questions from anybody?
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. For staff. This is different than what we voted on initially, where population determined the amount of dispensaries, the amount of manufacturing, because I think they're going to do both, right? Who, was it the state legislature that approved this change?
Yes, it was.
A vote, a vote of the legislature?
The voter.
Or the committee?
The legislator changed the general statute as a whole.
Yes, it's the state general statute that changed.
Well.
And it says what?
You know.
You have a copy of it in front of you, I gave it to you.
But, but that was by the legislature, right?
Right, so it's both.
Okay, was it by committee?
No.
Okay.
It's part of the state statutes, if you look up the Connecticut general laws, it's in there, right there, and that, in fact, that comes from the general laws, the paper that I gave you.
Killney acted in good faith, you know, first time around, we approved that one that's going to, and I don't think it's occupied yet in Dable. Other communities opted for the one-year moratorium, you know, Plainfield, I know, is one, and I don't know about Putnam, but here we are, you know, now being asked to put in a second one, and not only a second sales establishment, a manufacturing facility. And you people are the experts, I guess, but I did some searches, you know, Google, you know, is, is a big one, you know, chat, all that stuff. And still, you know, the, there's no medical science out there that says marijuana is good health-wise, other than the fact that they admit that a lot of people that use it find a lot of relief, you know, it could be mental, but the science community doesn't really know yet. But what they are warning of continuously is the fact that this is a pathway drug. And here we are, we've acted in good faith the first time, because it's very popular, and now we're asked to do this. I mean, I've got a big problem with it.
I'll add to that. So when I was, in the nineteen fifty's, I was a little kid, and my brother was three years younger, and my father smoked cigarettes, Marlboros, a lot of them. And we spent our childhood begging him to stop. And he lived a long life, but his lungs were tar-filled, even though he had the filter tips. And I understand that these establishments are now legal. Smoking cigarettes and selling them back then was legal. But I'm not voting for something where people are inhaling smoke.
There's also edibles, there's seltzers, it's more than just.
I know.
The traditional way of consuming it, you know what I mean?
Right, but I'm telling, this is just my.
Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I do not.
You know, we have a.
Believe you're doing anything illegal, you're not, you're doing a legal thing.
Yep.
Cigarette smoking was legal entirely, and so I'm saying I'm not going to vote for this.
Somebody else?
Matt, you want to go?
I was just going to say, so we had the one, the one-year moratorium originally in place from when it was put out by the state, right? Is there, I know there was suggestion by that town council that maybe it ends up going out to further people of Killney to decide. I know that's not on us to do, but is there anything that we can, if that was something that we wanted to wait?
He has, the applicant before us has applied underneath the conditions as they stand now. We have to look at the conditions as they are now. We are supposed to be looking at our zoning regulations as they stand now, we're supposed to be looking at our state statute as it stands now.
Okay. Thank you.
I got some technical questions, sorry.
I'll do the best I can.
So I'm just going to go through the cannabis five sixty-seven rules.
Okay.
And your answers, just to make sure we're clear on those. So separation requirements, again, we talked about the five hundred foot minimum separation. You work with town staff, just to get on the record, to do what?
To, I'm sorry, just repeat that question again?
So, the standard is five hundred foot separation, there's nothing in our packages that we have in front of us that shows a five hundred foot separation. Again, we just went through it online regarding the ball field, right, but you sat down with the staff to look at that section?
And to make sure that it didn't meet all the setbacks correct.
So I want you to describe it, so it's on the record versus me stating it, right? What did you do with the town staff and verify, to verify you met that requirement? Because basically, your answer is property is properly zoned, general commercial, meets all setback requirements. How'd you?
Yes, so for, for the record, at our second meeting with the town, we had a discussion with them, and they told us through doing measurements of their own that we met all of the zoning setbacks required for this establishment.
Thank you. So again, B, when the proposed use of butts of residential district, you're required of a twenty-five foot buffer zone. Again, your statement is due to building and property location, buffer strip does not apply, it does apply.
Okay.
You have residential across the street.
Okay.
So I just want you to go through the buffer zone that exists, why you think it's appropriate, why the commission shouldn't ask for additional buffer. We had some comments from staff, but again, I'd like to have it from the applicant. Again, well, how you meet that requirement, because what you stated is incorrect.
Okay, can you, I don't have that in front of me, do we have a copy of that, just so I can?
Not in front of me, no.
No. Which one's it again?
Uh, B, one B.
I mean, I think it was just, I guess it could be the way I interpreted it, but are you looking for us to put up a, I guess, what is the buffer strip? Planted screening that may require that by the commission? I guess we're kind of looking at it as, you know, we're far enough away from that residential property, do we have to put up a fence so they can't see it? I mean, that's, I think, something up to the board to decide.
Yeah, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but again, I would say something like, you have an existing facility.
Yeah.
Again, it has adequate setback.
Right.
You have a buffer on that northern side, the residential structure's on the southern side, right, so therefore you don't think it's necessary, and the commission has to agree with that.
Yeah.
Right.
If you're looking at the facility from the road, the road, because it sits farther down and it's up higher, the way you look at it, and because it sits so far back, you can't really see it.
Yeah, I would just recommend in the application, you put something referencing as to why you don't think the buffer zones required versus that it does not apply.
Okay.
It's just my point, all right?
Okay.
Again, two, applicant must provide the following map identifying locations, buffer, and uses included with the application. Again, there is a map, it doesn't identify anything, but there is a ball field, it'd be nice to see on this map.
The distance.
Eight hundred foot setback, fourth, again, record, so it's in the file, so someone says, hey, did you look at it?
Yep.
It's nice to show that, hey, we did look at the one thing we could identify within that, that doesn't exist. So, security methods, again, you talked a little bit about it, you talked a little bit about it today. I would like to either understand, have you had that meeting with town constable, come back, report, any feedback on the security plan?
I got an email that just says, no comment, what am I said at this time?
Can you provide that for the record?
Yes.
So I would get that for the record, so we have it, right? No comment this time, exactly what you, because then you said something about hiring third-party security, so that's an addition. That's not listed here, that you will have security inside the building.
Okay.
It just says state guidelines, it'd be a little bit more information on the security plan. I know you don't want to provide the plan, but a little more information.
No, that's understandable.
To what it is. Water consumption and waste management, so I have a question on that. So you talked about having a closed-loop wastewater recycling and recovery system. Can you talk about what that is, what you, how you recover, how you're recycling, is there any residue whatsoever from that recovery system?
Nothing goes into the municipal sewer system, other than, you know, the cleaning of the utensils afterwards, if you will, but all the biomass will be pulled out of the apparatus and disposed. Correct, solid waste side, right, right, right.
What about the water side?
Just reused.
Just reused, but there's really no water being, there's really no, none of our processes reuse a whole lot of water, to be honest with you. It's all solvents or solventless, which is just pressing of the product through hydraulic press at extremely high pressure. And you push the oils out, and it gets caught in a pan. So there's really no water being used in our process, if you will.
Well, you do say you have a water recycling system, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, there's no.
Every water recycling and purification system has some sort of residue, whether it's RO, whether it's filters, whatever. You have some sort of residue that has to be disposed of, so I'm just asking what sort of material you will have to be disposed of. Your only disposal going to be solid waste?
Correct.
And where is that biomass going to be stored?
It'll be stored onsite in a, in a container.
Inside?
Inside.
Okay.
There's a container as part of the full system, depending on whatever extraction method you're using, kind of like the last container in the system is where the biomass is stored, and then, as we mentioned earlier, that third party will come in and take the biomass out and recycle it, or whatever they do with it, it's a third party.
And if biomass is hauled out, how frequently?
Typically about once a week. Depends on how, you know, how much you're manufacturing, but for of our size, it would be about once a week.
Okay, all right. Merge, generate, a location, and fuel source.
So right now, we've discussed putting it behind the building with Big Y.
Yep.
We have to kind of finalize that exact location with them, and we're going to use propane. I have not looked to see if there's natural gas over there, I'll be honest with you. If there was natural gas, we'll obviously use it, but then we'll do something with propane tank and obviously store it properly.
So another take order would be, I know you asked to request a waiver for the survey, it would be nice to see a site plan. Take that plan, identify, generate a location, fuel location, how it's being protected, how it's being fenced in, right? That information needs to be stored, would be nice to see on your site plan, your modes of ingress and egress, as far as, here's our front entrance.
Yeah.
All right, here's our delivery point, because you kind of mentioned, might be the side door, might be the back door.
Yeah.
All right, here's our delivery point, you mentioned sprint vehicles, maybe box trucks. Again, what type of vehicles are coming in, where's the loading dock, unloading dock?
Yep.
That's security related to that, that would be nice to see. You do have to comply with, I think the chairman was reading the site plan, application side?
Right.
Right, that has a requirement under this, you have to meet those rules as well. Signage, you mentioned, what size sign, where's the sign going to be, what's it look like, make sure it meets the dimensional requirements of signage? Those, et cetera, hours of operation, what are your hours, your commonwealth will comply with whatever.
Yes, it's.
What are your hours of operation you're proposing?
Most likely, it's going to be like nine to eight, or ten to eight, something like that.
Monday through Friday, Monday through Sunday.
Monday through Sunday, Sunday through Saturday, sorry.
So in our rules, we have limits for hours of operation, again, you should just reference what you're going to do.
Yep.
So it's on the record from you, not from us.
Okay.
Et cetera. Sorry, Ms. Chairman. Oh, and I would like to hear more about your, so you put up on the screen your, your, your better term, machine?
What's that?
The technology you're using?
Yeah.
To do the pressing, the process?
The extraction.
Again, so you are using, which say ethanol and butane?
Yes.
What, again, again, this will be a farm marshal discussion, but we should note in the application, what amount of storage is on site? What's that process exactly, is there any emissions from that process? Is there any venting?
No.
That occurs, what sort of safety precautions happening inside the layout? I mean, it would be nice to see architectural, you said they're not ready yet.
Correct.
Be nice to have architectures, it'd be floor plan.
Okay.
Where is that material stored, how's it stored, what are the safety concerns we need to know about? Is there any special precautions, rules, books, whatever, that need to be known from our perspective? Because we're approving that inside a building that has an adjacent use.
Yep.
Yep.
So something happens in your side of the building, it could affect the other side. So is there an explosion hazard, fire hazard, whatever, during the process?
Gotcha.
Right, even though you said you're going to meet NFPA code, et cetera, et cetera, it would be nice to have more information on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
If, again, publicly available, readily available, you know, if there's anything proprietary, that's a different story. By a unit, it's a public unit, that's all you should go and get whatever's specified in the storage.
Okay.
Knox box location, if it's required, I don't know if it's required.
It's required in every business in Killney.
Yeah.
We're right outside the door, main entrance.
Should be on the site plan, right, again, just your discussions with the farm marshal, et cetera. Sorry.
I apologize.
Nope, sorry.
That's all I have for now. But again, I think the art touch was, looks like, in our key, I mean, while we have our sketches, it does really show us a lot. I did put a few things up there, but you need to, from a site plan perspective, so it's readily available.
That's fine.
Any other commissioners? Michael?
I have a question. With all the questions that Mr. Carr has, I would suggest that the hearing gets continued till next month, continue the hearing.
We'll go down that line in a minute.
Okay.
We kind of assume, please.
Any other questions? John? Any other question? Go ahead.
Sorry, just, just because it's on the slide, are you doing both? Are those two different processes?
Yes.
Yes.
And are you doing both inside a building?
Yes.
Yes.
They'll be separated, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Both locations.
Where they are, how they allow, how they interact.
Yeah.
Correct.
And again, to show that where your waste products are, inbound storage is going to be, I think you got a sketch of vault and a couple things.
Staff, anything? Anybody from the public? Okay, somebody want to make a motion, we'll continue this public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, Brian. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
To June nineteenth.
So you want to amend your?
Mm-hmm.
Make your motion.
It's your motion.
Yes, I amended too.
You just restated.
Restated.
Continue to June nineteenth.
We don't want to vote twice.
Yes, I second that restatement, nice job. Continue to June nineteenth.
Any further discussion? All in favor, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. See you June nineteenth. Thank you. Okay, new business, non, workshop meeting minutes, eighteen seventeenth. Anybody want to make that motion?
Make a motion, be accepted.
Second?
I'll second it.
He can't make a motion.
Who?
Kenny?
Yeah, he was, well, I don't know.
Not voting member making a motion? I don't know.
He was, he was a voting member at the meeting.
He was, he was a voting member at the meeting.
Well, I know, I'm just making sure we're correct.
In the workshop, he was seated, but he wasn't seated for this meeting, so.
Non-voting member make a motion?
They really, most likely, they should.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, I think, I think it'd be safer if it's withdrawn and somebody else makes the motion.
Well, let's put it this way.
I don't think so.
Let's put it this way, we can't make motions because we weren't here, right? We're going to abstain.
You can abstain.
Of course.
So is there a problem with it?
We can't make motions, so the motions are limited to those.
Let's move the question.
Do you want, okay, then what we need is?
A new motion.
Sorry.
These, you need a motion, and if you have three people that were here.
Right.
One of the three can make a motion, someone can second, and if.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
You made a motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions?
I abstain, I was absent.
Okay, so there's three, four, and two abstentions. Motion passes.
Regular meeting minutes, April 17th. This should go real smooth now.
You think?
Same thing.
One more thing.
John?
You make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Matthew makes the second. Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, two abstentions. You got that, Joe, in? Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Well, what about this one?
Which one?
Okay, so this was the workshop, and now?
We both.
Okay.
Stay with us.
I need your ear after this.
Workshop, if needed, all right, just the business part, we've, we're going to continue that for next month, 6 o'clock or?
Yeah, all right, did we say that already?
I didn't hear it, I'm.
Oh, you weren't here, that's right.
June 19th at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, you have the option to discuss it.
There's a line here, I'm asking a question.
You can discuss it right now, if you'd like.
I want it on the record, so that, this is a different meeting.
You got meteor shot for you, meteor thing in 40 minutes.
Zoning practice correspondence, we don't.
Not the meteor satellite thing.
Apartment reports, zoning enforcement, any reports, Matthew, Jonathan?
No, no, any questions?
In the wetlands and water course agents?
None.
None.
Economic Development Director is not here.
She's not here this evening.
With notification.
Town Council Liaison, not here.
Absent with notification.
Absent with notification.
Yeah.
My German, have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.